And I had an easement removed from a cabin we had on the lake seventy-five miles over to Anchorage, Alaska. It was a section one easement that gave the county or the borough the right to do anything they wanted on this easement, except it went right to the middle of our cabin. It was put in there, the cabin was built around it and nobody did anything about it. And it was an issue that took us probably six months to get removed. But we got it. I had to go before the borough council and make sure that they moved it forward and do the research on paperwork for that ask deal and things like that. So I have experience. I know what it means to change something, to try to go around the ordinances and the laws. And the impact it can have on the local city residents is kind of the business for the individuals trying to do that.
Mr. Lewis, we're glad to see you. This town needs people who are genuinely interested in doing what's right, what's good for the town, so welcome.
Thank you.
I see you were a candidate for the Alaska State House. And what made you decide to come here? Was it too bold up there?
Well, you're partially right. We were up there for, I was captured up there by my company in seventy-eight. And it was an exciting adventure. Being a corporate representative and flying all over the state, all that stuff, and I had a lot of fun. I got married in seventy-nine. My wife, we've been married for over thirty-five years now. We love living in Alaska. We started our own business in ninety-two, sold it in two thousand and eleven. Alaska's a place that you have to really participate in to really enjoy. We had done everything. And we were just ready to move someplace else. And we were looking for a moderate climate, not too hot, not too cold. A lot of our friends retired to Scottsdale in fifteen. And all they do is complain about the weather, how hot it is. Come up and think of Alaska, or they come up here. So we wanted to live in a place that we could live year-round. We wanted a small town, only water, didn't necessarily have to be the ocean. My wife is actually the one who found people bay answering a dental ad. And we flew down here in April of twenty-one, came filming over the place, which is way beyond our expectations. And the size, the community, everything, we just felt comfortable. So we moved down here and we've been staying here forever.
Well, I for one, I'm glad you're here. Anybody that lives here in a short period of time is getting involved in our process and is working to help to our community. I'm glad you're here.
Well, I hope to bring a fresh perspective on some things. I'm not from this area, but I've got a lot of experience in other areas, smaller towns and large towns. Anchorage, if you consider a large town. But I'm anxious, we've been getting settled for the last year and a half. We have two children, three grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. Family is mushrooming out. We lost our son in Jan-, July twenty-seventh, a psycoma brain tumor happened very rapidly. He was just retired from the Nevada State Troopers and has started his own security company and had nine retired troopers working with him in the casino to restore his load and start trying to get him work. And he was going to bring his new girlfriend up to visit us in Deuceville. He died like in two months after all that. That was a big, that was a big loss for us. But we have a lot of other, I mean, we've got a grandson, Davis, and a great-granddaughter and a son who carried her.
Any more questions of Mr. Lewis?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the vote is unanimous to appoint Mr. Bob Lewis to planning permission position number three. So if the council wants to do the motion to accept the telling votes and appoint Mr. Lewis to that position.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the vote and we appoint Mr. Lewis to position number three it is of the county.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, called, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Mackler?
Yes.
Gavino?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
I don't, excuse me, item six, reports of officers, boards, or family committees. We have nothing? I'll do the public comments, please. Our obvious, please, come on. Say your name, address.
Ginnie Wallace and then a few box eleven seventeen, Deepo Bay.
Inside box?
I'm sorry.
I thought you said you lived in the box.
A few box ones. I just needed to say a few things because I've been here for the last couple of years observing from when you started as a mayor. And I put my thoughts down on paper. And as a citizen of Deepo Bay, I've attended many of the city council meetings over the last few years. I was at your first meeting, and I was excited for your vision to help Deepo Bay gain strength and grow as a town. You always made it clear that the meetings you presided over would be transparent and democratic. In the beginning, I noticed strong opposition from a few of the council members to almost everything that you proposed. And it puzzled me that their opposition came regarding proposals such as the relocation of bathrooms, reconstruction of the park bridge as an emergency route, funding for the neighbors for kids, and the fish plant. Each of these proposals passed despite their opposition. I was also saddened to see such childlike behavior from the mentioned council members such as eye-rolling and snide comments. And I, as I attended more meetings, I saw the number of followers of these council members diminish in meetings. And happily, the comments that they directed towards you, such as "he's so stupid" and "what a jerk," that I would hear in the background, this is all the time, diminished along with the diminishing followers. Everyone has a right to their opinion, but I do not believe a public council meeting is a place for this negativity. The mayor has followed the democratic process in an exemplary fashion by following protocol and refusing to mudsling. He requires reverence for the meetings. Mayor Madala is a good and true leader for Deepo Bay, and he's reached out countless times to our state and national leaders to enhance not just Deepo Bay, but a lot of our coastal communities. Recently, one of the local papers said something to the effect that the townspeople of Deepo Bay wondered what could be done about the downright ugly politics gripping their city council. I think the answer is obvious, reelect A.J. Madala, and most of the ugliness will go away. And that's my personal feeling, so I have to share that.
Thank you. That was refreshing. On to the area of the public comments. All the unfinished business? Lincoln County Community Economic Development grant opportunity. And maybe you, was that what we were working on?
The what?
The grant opportunity.
Yeah.
It's proof of the shed or something? All right.
Real quick, I don't know. At the last meeting, this was distributed and announced and asked you to think about projects. And Brady did have this project in mind, which he'll talk about. The only other thing we've done since the last meeting is kind of review the current year budget for projects. Things we have in the budget this year are new finger peers. We have that scenic lands park along the highway project for improvements, which we already have about twenty-three thousand dollars of Parks and Rec funding. The entire project cost estimate is about twenty-nine thousand, so we can ask for funding for that. We do have the scenic view areas, those are our flat and dead-end streets where we have our master plan, where we're going to do improvements. We have that in our current year budget. We have a harbor history sign, which is a project that Parks Commission's been working on for quite some time. And that's kind of it as far as reviewing the budget. And then Brady will talk about his thoughts.
Real quick, the harbor sign about, we were kind of concerned about the areas where to put that. That was really kind of on the drawing board first, and then we came up with the shed down in the parking lot area that provides the power cover for all the docks. And it's where the main breakers are. And there is a small attach ability that used to be some storage for containment boom and emergency spill. But we've since taken that out of there and restore it now in the barn out here. And because the building leaks so bad on the side. And where the power is, it doesn't leak, but the roof is in need of repair. The siding needs to be replaced on it. Door needs to be replaced. So we could take it down without having the power, I mean, we could have Western States stop by, I guess, and give us a courtesy inspection once, not really an inspection, but a once-over to see if there's any issues that we need to address prior to, you know, remodeling the outside. As far as the structure itself, I think we'll be okay. But that funding would go towards siding, maybe replacing the mudsill, see if there's any raw issues. And this might be one of those projects where we get into it, we know more as we go. So, you know, I probably see probably a price tag of somewhere around a thousand dollars to do the siding and if the crew does the labor. And we put most of that money in for just materials. We should, we should be able to build a storage area for the containment boom and resite it, paint, and bring that building up to code and make it look nice for the harbor.
The storage building, you're thinking about, is it going to be directly behind? Or is it going to be one side to the other? Because that's an easement there.
There's an, right, there's an existing building there now. It wouldn't, it wouldn't project out any further than what's there now.
No, I was just saying, is it going to encroach closer to dock side?
No, it's going to encroach to the south, but there's an existing one there now that sticks out, but it's kind of abandoned. And it probably goes up two and a half to three feet, and that's probably to the south in the width of the building. That's probably all it's going to be, but it's going to be taller and kind of will integrate it in with the main building, so it'll look like a shed just a bit longer, but there won't be the, like a scat on addition like there is now.
Yeah, the code on that too, the electrical code, it has to be so many, a distance away from the electric panels and whatever's stored in there.
Right, when the, when the doors are open, exactly. So that storage will be separate from the inside of the building. They'll have to access it from the backside to get to the storage area. The door, that'll shed door down a little bit. The other kind of top of the list was the, kind of the, it's a sign that Parks came up with that kind of gives the sense of the history of Deepo Bay. And it's a sign similar to what we had made for the Park Seating Trail. I don't know if you've noticed the kiosk signs that go along the trail. Same company would make this, they would take photos and kind of, again, integrate it into this, how the signs lay out. They haven't really came up with an idea yet, but these old vintage photos, I talk about Deepo Bay, and it would be placed, this alternative, down by the Coast Guard ramp on the little grassy area that is city, some city property there. This little grassy area, it's not a sidewalk, it's not used for anything. Possibly putting that sign there that dry long cyclone fans, we've got some homework to do to see if that's, that's doable, but it's a great spot for that. And then possibly a bench also. Kind of some ideas that Parks came up with. And we could utilize some of that funding for that rather than do the shed. And like Currie said, there's various other scenic land issues that we could use the money for.
Just one question about the rebuilding of this electrical unit. Is it possible that we could incorporate our city logo on that as well?
Yeah, actually, yeah, with the Newport sign has our logo just as a decal. So we could actually make, we could actually have the decal put on some kind of a piece of MBO, which is a signboard that's weatherized, made for exterior use, and we can put our logo on that, absolutely, you know. That's doable, but that's going to be a lot of money. So we just purchased the logo, a piece, small piece of MBO.
Do we have any idea how much the harbor sign would be?
I'd give you about five thousand, almost. Because it's that special material that's going to last forever. It's just like the interpretive signs we got for the nature trail, and that's, yeah, probably around five thousand.
Yeah. The Frank Hart's need wall, it's power coated, and it's made to stay in the ground for a long time. Yeah, so, yeah, like Currie said, I think the most costly part is the picture itself.
If you had that storage shed, you guys reacted really quickly to that paint truck hopping into the bay for a free ride. You had that, that storage of the boom equipment all there, is that going to quicken the response for?
Yeah, it should. I mean, the guys had that, that boom actually in garbage containers with lids on it behind our fueling area that we keep in the summer time. There's really no other place to put them other than in garbage tails at this time, the ragged canisters with the boom rolled up, coiled up inside, and they can access them quickly. But we can't keep those out at like a storm, we're going to have to, you know, it would get ruined, so we, you know, we can't.
So is that your matter?
Pardon?
You have to put them away.
Yeah. And putting them away is in the, maybe in the barn here, in this harbor master shed, and pull them out during the day, or if it's really raining, you have to keep them in the shed and kind of walk around them. Stuff has to be accessible to meet our protocol for the co-shed requirements for that too.
And would the addition to that shed afford enough room for the most?
Yeah, of course, that portion that we need there, absolutely. And then, you know, still, I still have my radar out for the other area for the building to, for storage over there.
So you need a direction from us, which way we're going to go?
With this, yeah. Like Currie mentioned, there's a lot of other, we could go, if you need more info, we could gather more info on the other scenic land area projects.
Actually, the timing, we have to submit the grant application by November fourth, which is the date of the next.
Two weeks.
And one of the requirements when we submit our application is that the governing body has chosen the project that will be, well, first of all, you decide if you want to submit an application. And if you do, the governing body selects the project.
So Currie, when we select and do this application, do we have to be specific about every product and every little thing we're going to use it for? Or could we say harbor regulations, harbor?
We have to identify what it, they would, they would want to know what we're going to spend the money on, instead of us.
And then we have to spend that full fifteen thousand on that?
Well, no.
Or if there's some left over?
That's the maximum per project that we can ask.
But if we have left over funds, do we have to return them? Do we have to match them? Or do we get to keep them and use them for something else?
Well, when we submit our application, we identify the project and, and the cost. Let's, let's say we have a ten thousand dollar project that we estimate the cost. We would ask for ten thousand dollars. We don't, you don't ask for the full fifteen, you only ask for what you need. For example, the scenic lands project that we already have of the majority of the funding, twenty-three and twenty-nine thousand cost estimate from Parks and Rec, we could ask for the other six thousand from the Lincoln County Grant Program. That, just as an example, not selling that, but just as an example, so. So you only ask for what your project cost is, whether it's the full project cost or the part of it.
Now, at one point in time, we had fifteen thousand dollars that was earmarked for new pilings on the west side of the harbor.
The only current grant through this program that we have is the fifteen thousand dollars we applied for last year and were awarded for the harbor master plan study. So, and, but yeah, over the years.
I'm not talking about current one. This is one that, that I believe we wrote to the county commissioners and had, and told them we wanted to change it, which is where the rest of the money came from for the electrical works down on the docks. So it was originally earmarked for new pilings on the west side, but using it for the, for the, the electrical work on the docks was more important. And they agreed to that. So they are, they are somewhat flexible with it.
So what kind of price do you have? Because it sounds like the shed is a practical item. That's what it sounds like to me.
I think that if we, what we're going to have to do, the shed regardless, I mean, really, so, so a number would need?
Yeah, how much, how much do you think we need to ask for?
I would ask for anywhere from thirteen or fifteen. Now, we could, we could ask for the full fifteen if we decide to like put the correct door in the storage shed. I mean, we can make it really, we can get the right material to do the right job and maybe even get a chance to do some upgrade inside also with the lighting fixtures and really utilize that material. We did that with the grant for the emergency communications tray, or we ended up actually having some projects for that that we did. And it turned out that what we had scheduled cost more than what we thought, so we ended up only getting, you know, so much done in emergencies. We got the bench made, but we never got food bucket storage. So that's an example of, you know, probably shooting for this, but probably getting this.
We definitely need to repair that roof to keep the water off the electrical supplies in there.
Yeah, and like I say, we should buffer that for what we don't know.
It'll save time, staff time, the having those rooms we have.
Yeah.
And other things too, you store other things in there?
Right, yeah, we do. Various emergency stuff for the docks. But we still have to have the clearance, like the mayor said, for the, for the code. But again, like I mentioned earlier, we never know what we're going to run into, so when you have to start opening things up, you open a checkbook, so.
I think that distance is, I can't remember if it's three or four feet from the panels, but it's going to be considerable, a person can ride there and do something serviceable or whatever.
Like I say, I'll have George from Western States come give us a kind of a courtesy inspection of his end, as not as an inspector, but respectful of the city.
I would like to make a motion that we request fifteen thousand dollars from the Lincoln County Community Economic Development grant for the purpose of rebuilding and renovating the harbor shed.
Second.
Called, please.
Mackler?
Yes.
Gavino?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mackler?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll do that.
On item B, the proposed resolution number four thirty-three, a resolution extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Deepo Bay recovered in the year twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and revising and replacing resolution of number four thirty-three. Is that one that comes up again that?
If you remember, in May of this year, we adopted a resolution number four thirty-three, extending workers' comp coverage to our volunteers for this fiscal year, July twenty-fourteen through June twenty-fifteen. So you're wondering, why are we doing this again? Well, we had a field audit, and the field audit went smashingly well, everything was wonderful, but they came back and asked us to change the code classification of our traffic safety commissioners that separate our trailer. We had it classified as commissioners doing manual labor, and they're, they asked us to reclassify that as public safety volunteers. So that's what's done. In your packets, you've got a copy of resolution four thirty-eight for your consideration of adopting tonight, which will revise and replace resolution four thirty-three. I also redistributed a copy of resolution four thirty-three, so if you have time to look at it, we're not changing any of the coverage that we authorized for this fiscal year back in May. We're just moving the traffic safety commissioners from the one code classification to the other. So are, do you have any questions on that? And this, this is just for the fiscal year. Every year in May, we, we talk about reviewing this, so.
So this will? Lose care of the extra months between now and May and then May too?
Well, yes, yeah. This, this will run to June thirty at this point in the year, this fiscal year, yes.
So Currie, this reclassification, did it change the premium?
It will very slightly. Public safety volunteers, you have an assumed monthly wage of eight hundred dollars a month, which is the same assumed wage as the other, the commissioners doing manual labor. So the dollar amount we're reporting as wage is going to be the same. And it's a very minimal dollar amount. It's, I mean, total premium for the year for that.
and revising and replacing resolution of number four thirty-three. Is that one that comes up again that, uh?
Okay, I'll, you're, if you remember, um, in May of this year, we adopted a resolution number four thirty-three extending workers' comp coverage to our volunteers for this fiscal year, July twenty-fourteen through June twenty-fifteen. So you're wondering why are we doing this again? Well, uh, we had a field audit and, uh, the field audit went smashingly well. Everything was wonderful, but they came back and asked us to change the code classification of our traffic safety commissioners that separate our trailer lot. We had it classified as commissioners doing manual labor. And they're, they asked us to reclassify that as, uh, public safety volunteers. So that's what's done. Um, in your packets, you've got a copy of resolution four thirty-eight for your consideration of adopting tonight, which will revise and replace resolution four thirty-three. I also redistributed a copy of resolution four thirty-three. So if you have time to look at it, we're not changing any of the coverage that we authorized for this fiscal year back in May. We're, we're just moving the, uh, traffic safety commissioners from the one code classification to the other. So are, do you have any questions on that? And this, this is just for the fiscal year. Um, every year in May, we, we talk about renewing this, so. So this will, um-
Lose care of the extra months between now and May and then May too?
Yes. Yeah. This, this will run to June thirtieth, if I'm not mistaken, this fiscal year, yes. So Curry, this reclassification didn't change the premium? It will very slightly. Um, public safety volunteers, you have an assumed monthly wage of eight hundred dollars a month, which is the same assumed wage as, um, the other, the commissioners doing manual labor. So the, the, um, dollar amount we're reporting as wage is going to be the same. And it's a very minimal dollar amount. It's, I mean, the total premium for the year for that is, I believe, around, Nick, thirty dollars. So it, it's, it's a minor impact.
So does require a motion, huh?
Yes, a motion to adopt a resolution four thirty-eight.
Come on, I want to-
I move that we, uh, adopt resolution number four thirty-eight.
I second the motion.
Paul Wies.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Matula?
Yes.
Gambino?
And other correspondence?
Three items of correspondence this evening. First is an email from Kristen Don, ODFW. And it's an email announcing a meeting on Wednesday, November twelfth, from three-thirty to five P M. It'll be in Newport at the ODFW Marine Resources Program Office. And this meeting relates to the Otter Rock Marine Reserve Memorandum of Understanding that was signed by county folks, city folks, the city of DeKalb Bay folks, uh, city of Newport, Port of Newport, fine fishermen interested in, I can never remember what fine standing for. Uh, an organization in Newport and ODFW, so that, this, um, you all have a copy of that. So if you're interested in attending, um, as members of DeKalb Bay who sign the MOU. And at that time, it was the mayor of DeKalb Bay signed it, the nearshore action team chairman, and the harbor commission chairman for the city of DeKalb Bay signed. Mayor of Newport signed, um, the chairwoman of the Board of Commissioners of Port of Newport, and Bob Jacobson, chairman of, there it is, Fishermen Involved in Natural Energy, fine. The second item of correspondence again is FYI. It's from Virginia Damaris, who is Lincoln County's Emergency Management Director. And there is going to be an emergency readiness fair. And it's gonna be on, help me, help me, help me, October twenty-fifth, this second day, eleven A M to two P M. It's going to be at the Lincoln County Charter House. All sorts of, um, good information about emergency and what to do when you have one. The last item of correspondence is an email from Yvonne Randall. And she's the lady that owns the, I'm gonna say right over there. Uh, we have a large blue metal building over here on the highway. She owns the lot that is immediately to the south and adjacent to the building. It's a vacant lot. Um, the, the owner of the building has been using it and has been using it as a parking lot. So, um, in her email, she says, "The previous lessees have until October thirty-one, twenty-fourteen, to enter and conclude negotiations for purchase of that lot. Neither owner has made any offer as of October sixteen." So she is inviting the city of DeKalb Bay to make an offer on that lot. And that's all the correspondence.
On that correspondence, Curry, can you, is there a better means of understanding which property this is? I'm not sure.
Where the driftwood is right next to the building?
It's the one just to the north of the sign, right?
Just the big building to the south of Driftwood. No, where the driftwood is now, they store all their stuff in there.
Oh, it's that lot.
That lot.
Right, they're small lot.
Right, yes.
Well, it's a lot. It, it's a good sized lot.
A hundred, two hundred.
It's deep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that about right?
I'm looking.
Counselor, that, uh, your question of that piece of property, it would be an excellent, uh, place to put a invasive species wash down area. And that is, that is going to, uh, be required at some point federally and through the state.
And that'd be two, the only access to that would be from one-on-one though, but.
I, I think we can, can't we come out of both sides of that?
That punches out on Shell Avenue, isn't it?
It's pretty steep.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Fifteen feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it runs from the highway to Shell Avenue.
But we can come out of, on the east side of it, can't we?
You could.
It's, yeah, there's some pretty extensive, you can always in there with a fourth name, but that could be, uh, that could be doable, yeah.
Well, yeah, anyway, my thinking is that, uh, since we're, at some point in time, this is gonna happen. And, uh, it would be, uh, it'd serve two purposes. One would be the washdown station. And, and the other would be that it would, uh, it's a perfect place for it because, uh, it would, uh, they'd need the congestion at the boat launch ramp itself. They just pass through that, uh, spray the boat down and go down and do their launch. And sort of have that down below and make it tougher for, for our favorite sailboat boaters to get down.
Perhaps could use that as an access control area to go down Shell Avenue too, if you're talking hard about it. In other words, we're, right now, we have a boat launch. We call it the trailer sailor boat launch. And all the fellows that wanna go fishing, or gals, I should say, they pull down there and they are supposed to put two dollars in this magical box and launch their boats. You know, I'm not sure that everybody puts that magical two dollars in that box and launch their boat. So it's possible this, uh, you're right, this invasive species thing is becoming hot. It's gonna, it's gonna happen. Maybe we should look at that as both that and the access control of the harbor. Getting people to pay for their boat launch up top. It's a thought.
Well, that, that being said, then, we need to direct staff to look into purchasing that property?
No, what, you know, I actually have a thought about that. Um, we have an election coming up and some of the new members of the next council are here and some of them are not. And, uh, maybe we should ask the staff to contact the realtor to get a ballpark price. It might be good and then we push this for the next council. It's just a thought.
If I may, um, Yvonne is traveling until the middle of November. The, the current lessees have until Halloween to exercise their option to purchase that property. So, and I'm, I'm not gonna tell you not to make any decisions tonight, but you could pull it over to the next council meeting. But if the council's interested, if you're interested, I think it would be perfectly appropriate to, um, she said to, hmm, oh, that's right. She said, um, if the city did purchase it, they'd like to place a plaque on the property in her husband's memory, but that, that's aside. Um, so, so if the council's interested, we certainly can let her know that via email. And then maybe discuss it further at the next meeting.
Perhaps, or push it even further if we need to. It's gonna take some time to do whatever we do there. Some serious plans, some thinkpawns.
Yeah. But, but we also don't wanna, oh, oh.
Oh, we don't lose that.
What life values do we need to show interest in?
Yeah.
What kind of pricing?
I, it's, as we were curious, Freddie and I, we checked into what the Lincoln County assessor's real market value is on that tax lot, eighty-four hundred, is seventy-seven thousand dollars.
It's not a lot of money. I think we should tell them, yeah, maybe we're interested, maybe.
I think so.
Yeah, let's check in, huh?
Okay. Let her know that you're interested and gonna look into it. Okay. Sounds good.
I have letters of correspondence. I actually have letters of correspondence here. This, uh, came from the district attorney, Michelle Branna, and she's up for election also. But a letter's been sent to me, uh, looking for individuals who are concerned about the community. And it's something to become a member of the local Public Safety Coordination Council of Lincoln County. And, uh, basically it says the key duties are to develop and recommend to the county board of commissioners a plan for use of use state resources to serve the local adult and youth offender populations. The plan must be for coordination of community-wide services involving prevention, treatment, education, employment resources, and intervention strategies. And the letter goes on, but, uh, the district attorney is looking for a person who would like to contribute time, uh, to this cause. And if you'd like, if you wanna see more information, see the, uh, county, uh, city report, and you can touch out.
All right. Do we have any more correspondence? Yeah, city staff report. We have some more.
Yeah, do you have any?
Hang on, do you want that? Dorinda Goddard is our representative on, I call it OXMA, Orient Coastal Zone Management Association. Um, Lauren is our alternate. And there is on this Saturday, um, in Florence, a state-of-the-coast conference. And, um, they have voiced interest in attending. So with our, our travel, uh, and meeting policy, um, council would need to authorize, it's, it's a registration fee of thirty-five dollars per person. And it's my understanding that then mileage, there's, uh, not gonna be any overnight logging. So it would be, it would be seventy dollars registration to attend, um, as well as the mileage round trip to Florence, if the council wants to.
Sure, I can, I'll let him ride with me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lunch is included in the registration.
I said for one vehicle, I'll let him ride with me.
No, I think, yes, what, what is?
Oh, it's Saturday, sorry.
It's Saturday?
Yeah.
So how much do we need to, to make sure we include the mileage? You've got the seventy dollars and then?
Really, about a hundred and twenty-five bucks?
Or seventy? Why, I was gonna say, is it four, is it fifty miles?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Is that?
So probably, all rounded up, forty dollars for mileage. A hundred and seventy dollars for registration and forty.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve a hundred and thirty dollars for the expenditure to send, uh, Dorinda and her husband to this important conference.
Second.
Paul Wies.
Goddard?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Matula?
Very definitely, yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry? Yeah, thank you for the email about it too, by the way. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a report. Um, so state of the, uh, port dredging is, I heard from, uh, Vern Scoble, that they're in the final stages of the dredging. And, uh, they're gonna be doing some of the fringe areas and meeting with the core and kind of getting the areas that have been sloughing off. And so there's a little bit more work where they have to stop. There's actually underwater sloughing and erosion that kind of occurs when they're trying to put a shear in. And so they're tapering in and they're working with the core on that. And then, uh, there'll be some cleanup work and, uh, removal, little, you know, the kind of ocean conditions kind of depend on how that's gonna go as far as getting the pipe and stuff down. So we're probably looking into the last week of October, a little over, but we've had some downtime because of weather problems here and there. But, uh, it's good to see it ending and, uh, all in all, it's been, when they have been working, it's been going pretty well. The Harbor Master and the port crew have been working with, uh, finger removal and kind of working with the, the guys and getting them fueled up and back to work. So, uh, I think kudos to our port crew too, that have been working with the dredging vessel. And then, uh, the, uh, you know, we got, I, and one thing I wanted to mention too is the storm we got coming tonight, that the, the crew's been out the last few days. We're kind of shorthanded and up down a couple of guys. So, um, we've been getting the culverts clean, catch basins, debris off the roads, 'cause we're gonna get a lot of rain. And so the plant operators are getting the, the water panels set, what the skaters to handle the large amounts of rain and getting the sewer system through infiltration, through the manholes. And it's just amazing what water will get in the sewer. They've been doing a really diligent job of hit that. And the water plant drinking water, they've been filling our tanks up to, to top. So if we get real muddy, you know, tr- water, we, we don't have to treat it. We can just use our storage water until things settle down and we'll be able to keep the drinking water in check. You know, uh, it's, like I say, we're really kind of shorthanded with the crew, so they didn't read any water meters and not a lot of main projects have been done. We're kind of in the tween stuff now, getting into the summer, trying to get the dredging done. You know, prepping for the storms right now, I think we're into that moment. This is a force me, and I've been working on with the engineer. We've got a, a really good plan in mind. And I will, I, I've got a couple more meetings with Garrett from Civil West, but, uh, we've got a really good feasible idea to keep that, uh, crossing of the highway without having to do a lot of core drilling and spending a lot of money testing for a brand that we're gonna go off of, uh, being able to dig most of it, open ditch, and stay on the side of the highway and then do the crossing. So I think his, his idea is gonna be really feasible. So, so far, I, I've been really pleased with how well Civil West has communicated with the project and, uh, 'cause they gave us a real feasible price. And so, you know, it, so far, so good.
Are you keeping Mark up to date, Mark Schneider from the Lenny Beach War up to date on?
Absolutely. Uh, I, I think verbal, 'cause I see Mark and, and, but, uh, yes. Any emails I get with Garrett and stuff, yeah, I definitely keep, you know, see Curry gets a C C mark, it's a compliment.
You're really a heart attack price tag, do you think, or?
Um, I think it's gonna be a little higher than we, than we thought.
That's great.
So, but still, you never know, there's some big roadblocks. That's it for my report.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, I know we're down a couple of staff people for the city and this is gonna start causing problems shortly. At least one of those is out for a while.
Actually, well, the, the, one, one guy was released to come back, um, and, uh, he, he's, he's got a really bad back problem, but he's kind of stable right now. And he has to wait two months before he can get a surgery. They're still backed up in chromalists. And he has a really bad stenosis in his back. But he's able to come back in a light duty position and, and he's cleaning and bringing this. So I've got stuff from his doctor and, uh, I'm gonna make sure that he works.
And he goes for, and he goes for back surgery, he's out.
And he's out for a while. You know, then he's gonna be out for a third day after that. So I've got a mic.
At least part time.
We have it in the budget. We have it in the budget.
I know, I know we do.
Right.
I, I, I would, I would seriously like to see the city, you rehire John because he's already trained. Then you can just, then you can just jump right in.
I, I don't know. He was, yeah, I told him that I would.
He worked for Department of Service, though, right? Is that correct?
That was Lewis.
No.
We had, we had John and-
John was in the city?
Was the, uh-
He did-
Oh, no, he did the, of the harbor, yeah. Pumped you.
And Lewis is the one that went on to something else. He went, he's a, you know.
We still have contact, so with the, um, pepper agency, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
No, but John, but John, he's already done a lot of these things. He's already trained. He's already knows everybody, everybody knows him. Could be no, no downtime. I just think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, curiosity, are, do you need it now or can you wait a couple? Uh, that's, that'll be your call, right?
Yeah, well, right now, I, uh, you know, getting through water meters, you know, 'cause it's, it's a big revenue issue for the city. So I'm, I'm gonna get, um, our main guy back to help with some of the, the meter stuff, 'cause he knows where it's all at. And, uh, if, if he can drive, you know, do, get, get through this. But yeah, as far as getting any big projects started, we're gonna have to be doing some storm drainage issues or in the ditch and digging. I can't have a light duty guy doing that.
Right.
Depending on what happens with these storms that are rolling down here.
Yeah.
I'd just like to see us prepared.
I, I don't disagree. So you can snap hire somebody within the next couple of days, plenty of resources.
We have all our, um, information still with, uh, E P S, uh, Pepper Services.
And also this John guy.
And I have- And I have a, sure. And I have a, sure, and I've been in contact with, with some of the, the guys that we're working for, so they call me, um...
So you have resources?
I do have resources.
Great.
So, yes, that's...
So, so do we need to give free information to jump on us when they please, or?
I think you could pretty much, can we just have him do it? He's, he's the boss.
Can he just do it?
Yeah, I think he can just do it, can't he?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a budget, we're not over budget there, so...
Right, uh, sure, do that. I, with it, within the end of October, definitely.
Okay.
We'll get through...
Just so they know what you're gonna do.
Yes.
That's the biggest thing.
I kinda have that in, in mind. I wanted to see how my guy that's been out comes back and does light duty, so...
Hopefully he does okay.
Right. Okay, so definitely, uh, I'll let everybody know by the next meeting which, uh, you know, what projects we got coming up and, and reasons why I'm gonna need some more help.
Yeah.
Did you have someone, bro?
No, I was just like, re-editing about John, so hopefully we still have a way to get a call to John. He's, he's, he's good this summer.
He was very productive, he was a good, solid worker, you know?
All right, I'll do, uh, council comments. We have enough? Okay, it's, uh, five minutes eight, we're done. Thank you.